I'm calling this a regular city council meeting of February 10th. Calling it to order at about 6:35. And we will start by having the pledge to the flag. And Kim, would you lead us in the pledge to the flag?
Absolutely.
Since we can't. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then would you call the roll on the attendance of city council members, please? Thank you.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Sir.
Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mayor Strong?
Yes. Okay, we are now officially in order. And we are meeting due to the provisions of Governor's executive order, which allow us to waive certain requirements of the Brown Act and to do this electronically. And I really apologize to anyone who's trying to get on and having any difficulty. And I hope that there's a way for them to get notified so that if any members of the public want to be in attendance, they are able to do that. So we're going to go to public communications. Is there anyone here who would like to address the city council on matters that are within our jurisdiction but that are not posted on the agenda? And just be aware that you'll have a three-minute limit and that we cannot take action on items that are not in the agenda. Any members of the public want to address us? And I am not hearing anybody or seeing anybody. So we're moving on. There's no public matters on our -- We have some other action items later on the agenda. We'll get to those. And there are also no enactment of ordinances on tonight. So now we're going to go to number five, the consent calendar, which is the minutes of February 3rd.
Mayor, unfortunately, the minutes are not in your packet. They're not -- they have not been completed in time.
Okay, so we're pulling that, and that'll be on our next agenda, perhaps. So there is no consent calendar items either. Okay, thank you. And there are some informational reports in the packet, building inspection activity and business license activity, but we don't need to go over those. And now we're going to go to the commission's agencies. We are not meeting as a different agency tonight. So we are now on item eight, city manager reports and recommendations. So, city manager Bender?
I'd like to give the council an update on where the status on the effort to coordinate with Bob Farol on the two sessions that have been identified for the council's benefit. Bob and I had a pretty good discussion today laying this out. I got some of his notes. We're really making progress on this, at least on the communication session of this, a session of this effort. Bob will be reaching out to each council member individually to kind of do an interview, your thoughts and what needs to be done. And then we'll get back together and convene, most likely in a closed session, to go over that and identify what methods are best for communication between councils and the manager, myself, and then ultimately staff. So that's the first thing, and that should be looking to be look to be occurring in the next two weeks. And then that's going to lay down the foundation for the goal-setting session. And our aim is to have that completed by about a month from now, the end of March. So that would give us plenty of time to take the goals, get them adopted by the council, and then and roll that forward into the preparation of fiscal year 21, '22 budget.
Okay, the only question I have, and maybe Jim can comment on that. The one-to-one meetings between us and Bob Farol sounds like a really good idea. But I don't know that a communications session with all of us is I think that would have to be Brown Act compliant. I think that would have to be an open meeting unless we call it something that has to do with personnel. So Jim, do you have a?
Yes, that's right, that's right. We could certainly have meetings with no more than two council members at a time. And so I'm not sure if there exists a Brown Act exemption that would allow a confidential meeting on this topic. I'd love to look into that.
We do have in our contract with Brian that we will be reviewing him, and I think quarterly or something like that. And it's part of -- Part of this session is the communications between council members and city manager. If we really feel it's important to have a closed meeting, we could call it a part of our review of Brian in progress or whatever.
Well, sure, if that's what it is. If you're meeting to evaluate your manager, you could have a performance evaluation in closed session.
Yeah, because I mean, it isn't really -- yeah. I mean, it isn't only a performance evaluation, obviously, but it does have to do with the communications between council members and city managers. So let's wait and see how Bob feels after he's interviewed us. And if we can do it in an open session, fine. And if he thinks it's really important that we have only the key players involved and no public, then let's look at doing it as a kind of performance evaluation in progress, unless anyone objects or has a better idea. Anyone?
So one of the things was, was that Bob was going to reach out to Jim and get his opinion on this. And we were definitely going to, once we conferred with Jim, we would proceed according to his instructions. So if Jim agrees that this needs to be an open session, that is fine. That is not going to make a difference to what we need to accomplish. And if anything, it's probably going to add value to it.
Any other -- any council members have a comment on this? And?
This is Suprina, just that I don't feel like we have to micromanage the details of it. If it's closed session, an appropriate closed session. If not, open session.
Okay, sounds good to me. Okay, other verbal reports from city manager Bender?
No, no, Mayor, there is not.
Okay. So we're going on to items nine, which include four different recommended actions. The first one is our amended fiscal year 2021 budget review with updates on appropriation authority. And that will be presented by Andy Heath, unless Brian wants to introduce first. But Andy's available, and I know he sent us a PowerPoint. So Andy, kick it away.
Yes, Mayor, it's the council, thank you. For the record, it's a consultant to the city. Does anybody hear me okay?
It's very murky, very kind of echoey. Can?
I'm wondering if I hear. I'm being through my laptop in the office. Is that a little bit better?
Not a whole lot, not a whole lot better.
Water.
Yeah, sounds like it.
Let me try. Let's stick back in some of those you want to set.
Yeah, a phone connection might be better. That would be a strain to try to figure out what you're saying.
During this interval, I'm going to ask Kim to bring up the start the PowerPoint presentation that Andy prepared, so.
Okay. You got it? I think so. Can you all see it?
Either of us?
Can you just put it as a slideshow?
Is there? Yes, that is better. Not -- it's still, it's still kind of echoing, Andy, but.
Well, I'm going to shut down. I've got to shut down my remote.
The other thing is, maybe Kim, or can we get a slightly bigger picture?
I'm trying.
It's only like half of my screen and I.
I'm trying to.
Okay.
Yes?
All right, that should help eliminate the feedback.
Oh, much better.
Okay, great. So I'm on my phone now, so I can't see the screen. But I'll walk through the slides. The slides are numbered for the council certification. So to the extent we're going through the presentation and you guys have any questions, just let me know what slide we're talking about. And the goal is to just get through the presentation and then entertain questions or comments or direction at the end of the presentation. I'm going to ask Kim to change the slides for me. So I'll just start with slide number two, and we'll get into it. So on slide number two, you can see this is the discussion outline for what we're talking about tonight, which is the fiscal 2021 mid-year review. So as you know, we're in the middle of fiscal 2021. We've completed about seven months' worth of activity, most of which is posted in the city's financial database. So we've taken a look at that and compared it to what was originally budgeted. And are preparing updates for you on both the revenue and expenditure perspective for all city funds. So we'll go over an overview and a make-your-budget-process review and what we considered and what we did. Then we'll look specifically at the general fund revenues and expenditures. Then we'll go into the general fund revenue forecast for fiscal 21, '22, which is the coming year, because that's important because there's a lot of changes on the table that are coming up in fiscal 21, '22. And we'll go over, at least from a very high level, what we anticipate the base budget to look like. Keep in mind, not a lot of analysis has been done for fiscal 21, '22 yet. There's still a lot of things that have to occur that you'll see on the last slide that I have taken the liberty to put together for the council, what we think may transpire, at least from the revenue and expenditure perspective at a very base level for the coming fiscal year. Then we'll look at the city's three enterprise funds and then a couple of other special revenue funds where there is an update to the budget. And then we'll talk about fiscal 21, '22 budget development and considerations. So I'm moving on to slide number three now.
I just wanted to again say I'm only seeing the top part of each slide. And it's partly because my screen is taken up with all the little boxes of us. If there's any way that we can temporarily see more of the screen, that would be great.
Madge, you need to adjust your screen so that everybody on the call is along the top and not as the gallery view.
Okay.
To see.
How do I do that?
Up in the top bar.
Yeah. This is more. I can view everyone.
Yeah, if you look at where the little people emoji thing is, that should allow you to switch. Or there's a part in the middle that says "view everyone", and it'll show you the gallery view in boxes. Or you can say just who's talking. You can move the camera position.
Yeah, I'm not. It doesn't seem to be doing that. What I'll do is I'll put it on just speaker. I don't know. I know how to do a lot of this on Zoom and not on this format here. Screen.
Madge, take your face off of the screen, and it should default to this. Give that a try.
Now it's gotten even worse. Say that again, Suprina?
Turn off your camera, and it might default to it for you.
It didn't. It's not doing that. Okay, I don't know how to do this. Well, I guess I'll just make do. I don't want to hold us up.
Okay, I will continue. So I'm on slide number three now. Looking at the mid-year process, the mid-year budget review process and what we've done to put this together for you. We actually reviewed and updated the fiscal year that just finished activity, the fiscal 1920 activity, to see exactly what transpired pre-audit to determine whether or not there were things that happened in fiscal 1920 that would lead into fiscal 2021 over the balance of the year. Keeping in mind that we've had the COVID pandemic, that it's impacted activity, both on a revenue side and an expenditure side, over the last year or so. So couldn't tell a whole lot. And as we recover from the pandemic with the economy, we'll see exactly where we end up. But nonetheless, we did look at fiscal 1920, and we updated anticipated fund balance carryovers into all schedules that you have in your packet. We also met where appropriate with certain department heads, as required, to obtain updated baseline budget information for fiscal 2021. We reviewed revenue trends and forecasts. So we have information from sales tax consultant and looking at exactly what has transpired over time in all of the main revenue categories, and then where expenditures have gone, specifically with payroll and any other one-time expenses. All that is built in. And then we, what I'd like to do is just ask the council that because of the COVID impacts and because of the coming need to really understand exactly what next year's budget, fiscal 21, '22 is going to look like, with all the changes that you'll see that are likely to happen with 21, '22, what I'd like to do is bring back an update to this format, you know, the mid-year update sometime in April, where we'll have more information, specifically good sales tax information for the fourth quarter, and actually bring that back to the council and give you an idea of exactly where we're likely to end up for fiscal 2021 at the end of the year. So I'll move on to slide number four. So now we're starting to look at the general fund. So when your council adopted a budget for fiscal 2021, you adopted a budget that was essentially projecting the use of just under $700,000 in reserves. You've got 4.7 million in revenues, offset by 5.4 million in expenditures. Keep it in mind that what this budget, this budget was prepared on a conservative basis. So we took a very timid approach on exactly what we thought COVID was going to do to the economy and likewise to the revenues that are experienced in the city over time. Sales tax was reduced significantly. Transient occupancy tax was reduced significantly just because we really didn't have an idea of where we would end up. So we have a $4.7 million revenue budget. At the same time, on the expenditure side, we were also conservative in that we budgeted for all authorized positions, 100% for the year, knowing very well that we would likely have salary savings that would materialize by the end of the fiscal year because not all your positions were filled at the time, and about all your positions are filled now. So you'll see that. And then, so we anticipated using just less than $700,000 in reserves, $694,000. When we updated the budget, you can see that the estimated amounts as of 6:30, '21 on the revenue side are $5.3 million. So we have an upward adjustment of revenue by just under $600,000. And we'll go through what that's made up of. And then you can see on the expenditure side, we have an increase in expenditures anticipated for the whole fiscal 2021 of $5.6 million, up about $209,000. So at this point in time, given what we know and looking at the mid-year from a very high-level perspective and looking at what we've accomplished over the last seven months and extrapolating that out with forecasts and such, we anticipate using about $311,000 in reserves as opposed to just under $700,000 in reserves for fiscal 2021. This could change. It's anticipated that revenues could come in a little bit more if sales tax improves even more. And again, if there are salary savings for the next five months, you will see that lower expenditures as well. So that 311 could improve, to be less than 311. Okay, I'm on slide number five now. Real quickly, I'll just go through some of the changes in the revenue for the general fund that are being recommended. For the general fund, as I mentioned, we're recommending about $600,000 in increased revenues. And that's made up of an adjustment to property tax of about $16,000. And that is just a true-up of property tax based on what was received in the first property tax payment and extrapolating that out. That is more than likely to be the actual number because the city is on the Teter Plan, where you get all of your secured rule three times a year, over the course of three times a year. You get everything that basically you put on the rule. So $16,000 there. Sales tax up by about $233,000. And this comes from the Avenue Insights forecast that has been provided. This is actually a little bit less than what they forecasted only because I want to take a very protracted approach on sales tax estimates before we really, you know, put in what we think the consultant might happen. What I've seen over time is that as COVID evolves, that a lot of these forecasts have been higher or lower. So I always take the approach to be on the conservative side. But nonetheless, I do believe that your sales tax will grow by about $233,000 by the end of the year, more than budgeted. You have major K sales tax that is added. And this is the major K that was approved by the voters. That will actually go into effect on April 1st. So you'll have one quarter of major K taxes that will accrue to fiscal 2021, which is about $300,000, except the $1.2 million anticipated. So that is added back to the budget. Transient occupancy tax is starting to come in a little bit better. You really weren't impacted to the degree we thought you were going to be impacted. But nonetheless, we're adding money back to transient occupancy tax for that budget. Cannabis tax, lower by about $88,000. With cannabis tax, I worked with your committee development director to really determine exactly where we thought cannabis would be. Apparently cannabis has dropped off a little bit in terms of the taxes collected. So to be conservative, we both worked and thought that it would be wise to reduce that budget a little bit and watch it over time. This will be one of the things that we would update the council with in April when we bring this back and give you your reports to show you exactly what has transpired. But this may come in a little bit higher. But we're 90% confident that even with the $88,000 reduction, we'll make the budget as adjusted. Small amount of real property transfer tax, lowering that. Just the receipts to date haven't materialized to the extent that was budgeted. So we're lowering that. Similarly, building permits, development activity is not, at least at this point in time, working up to what was originally anticipated. So reducing that by $30,000. Post-reimbairments, these are training reimbursements for police activities that are reimbursed by the state through the First Program. And that's about $6,000 more there that's anticipated to be collected. Actually, it has been collected. So we're adding that to the budget. CARES Act funding, in addition to $41,751 for the city's allocation of the State Department of Finance to allocate CARES Act funding out to cities. Water filling station, big adjustment there, $90,000 additional has come in for the water filling station. This is related to the need for the water as a result of the fire that occurred several months ago. And then when you combine all of the revenue sources, there's about another $6,500 in additional revenue that's due to come in. So about $600,000, just under $600,000, in increase in revenue forecast in the general fund. Moving on to the appropriation changes recommended for the general fund. So as I mentioned, there's about a $209,000 increase that's being recommended for appropriation changes in the general fund. In the finance department, we're reducing the appropriation by about $5,700. And that is because you have salary savings due to a vacant position, which is your finance director position that's there. And then we've also added some costs there for the sales tax measure, costs that will be added to the appropriation authority that was adopted with the original budget. Legal, $12,000 additional there. That increase is basically simply based on costs incurred to date with the conservative budget moving forward. Human resources, in addition of $34,000 there for recruitment costs, most of the cost increase there is recruitment costs for the city manager and the police chief are in that budget. And then you've experienced a little bit higher personnel cost to date as transferred to the human resources department. Moving on to slide number eight. Continuing with the appropriation changes, group information technology, $5,000 increase there. And that's simply for contractual services to date, as extrapolated out through the end of the year. For code enforcement, a large increase there. But as you'll see in one of the next slides, that $77,000 increase is simply because the position that was allocated to the building safety department or certain personnel costs are actually being charged to code enforcement. So building and safety has a similar credit to the $77,000. So not a whole lot of change between those two departments, as you'll see. Cannabis compliance, lowered that budget by about $29,000. And that's personnel allocation for that budget that's a little bit lower fiscal year to date. And then also, we're lowering the budget for the payment to for fire, for total late fire, just because you have lower cannabis revenues that are anticipated. So that impacts the amount that's ultimately transferred to the late fire. So that is built in as well. Moving on to slide number nine. You can see there at the top, the building and safety budget is lower by $78,000. And that's simply because those personnel charges are over in the code enforcement budget. So really no change between those two departments. Police administration, about a $34,000 increase there. And what I've done here is I've included the post-reimbairments. So that's additional money that was reimbursed for training. So I've included that in the police department's budget to offset that one-time revenue that's come in. And then we've also included the housing costs for the interim police chiefs, different chiefs that have been added to the budget over time. Police dispatch, an increase of about $77,000 there. And that's, a lot of that is, the majority of that, frankly, is due to overtime. So a large amount of overtime that's been incurred in the police dispatch area year-to-date, so that's added back. And then we also have updated salary increases that were provided in December 2020 that's been added back to that budget as well. Moving on to slide number 10. Continuing with the general fund, in police field operations, an increase of just under $31,000 there. Similar to dispatch, you have the updated salaries based on the increase provided in December 2020. And just a note here, you do have several vacant police positions at this time. And to the extent those remain unfilled, you will see ultimately a lower cost for police field operations because what I've done in putting the mid-year together is I've assumed that for the last five months of the year, those positions are filled throughout the entirety of the year. So just a conservative way to budget for positions.
Andy? Police state, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, this is Madge. I just have, by the way, I fixed my screen, so I did that quite.
Oh, good.
Near the beginning, I figured it out. So I wanted to just ask if, at least in the future, to make sure that we can distinguish between the overtime expenses on the police force in particular versus the raise increase in the salaries that we gave. Because I'm hoping that as we fill positions, we can see the impact that we have on how much overtime gets spent. Just, it's nice to have that tracked, distinguished.
Yep. Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
And I can give you the detail for that, too. What I want to do with, when I prepare the fiscal 21, '22 budget for you, is actually begin providing personnel services detail as well, like I do for the materials, supplies, and contracts and such, at a much deeper level, just so you can see the history of that and actually have the line item where that question may easily answer if you look at the Schedule IV police operations.
Yeah.
I will do that for you.
It's been an ongoing concern of how much overtime we're relying on and how much impact that has on the personnel as well as our budget. So, thank you.
Okay, no problem. Moving on to the last part, slide 10. So police state COGS program. So police state COX program, you do have a COX grant that you were awarded. So we added back some expenditures for that for having that position filled, $56,000. And then if you take all the other appropriations and you combine them in the general fund, there's about a $5,000 decrease, just very small changes in other areas and other departments. Moving on to slide 11. So when you take the net impact of the recommended revenue and expenditure changes to the mid-year budget, if all of that comes to fruition, and given the anticipated carryover fund balance that we are likely to see at the end of fiscal 1920, once the audit is complete, we will have about 2.39 million, just under 2.4 million dollars in your reserves in the general fund. That balance represents about 42.6% of your fiscal 2021 expenditures. So pretty good reserve levels, at least from a percentage perspective of expenditures for the city. Okay, slide number 12. So rounding out the general fund, as I mentioned at the outset, I put together a forecast for fiscal 2122, which is for both revenues and expenditures specific to the general fund, given a number of changes that are out there. So what I've done here is I've given you the fiscal 2021 mid-year as being recommended that we just went through for both revenues and expenditures, where you see 5.3 million in revenue, offset by an anticipated 5.6 million in expenditures, for a projected deficit or use of reserves of $311,000. Now keep in mind, as I mentioned before, that your revenues could come in a little bit higher, particularly because of sales tax and because of the cannabis tax. And your expenditures could likely be very, could be lower as well because you do have vacant positions at this time. So that 311 may or may not materialize, but it's likely to be something less than 311 use of reserves. When you parlay that out and you take what is considered the base budget, and this is what is in item number one there, where the base budget assumes the current authorized staffing levels framework with all positions filled, the duration of the fiscal year, and you're removing all known one-time revenues and expenditures from the previous fiscal year. So what does it take for the city to provide a constant level of service similar to what we're doing today with known revenue increases or decreases and then known expenditure increases as well? That's what a base budget does. So I've tried to go through and eyeball what I believe the base budget is likely to be for fiscal 2122. And from a revenue perspective, about 6.18 million. And from an expenditure perspective, 5.6 million, okay? So that gives you a surplus or in addition to reserves of $580,000. That's if you do nothing, nothing different than today, okay? So let's go through what that, what those revenues are made up of. Why is there an index from the mid-year to the preliminary base of just under $900,000? Okay, I've assumed a 2% growth in property taxes, so that gives you another $19,000. Forecasted increase in sales taxes from Avenue Insights gives you another $150,000 in sales tax. The collections for a full year of major K gives you an additional $900,000 over what's anticipated for fiscal 2021. Instead of 300, you get 900 more, 1.29. Increase in transient occupancy taxes as we hopefully come out of the COVID crisis and things return to normal. About $40,000 there. We have a decrease in one-time grants and CARES Act funding of about 121,000 that's in the general fund at the mid-year that may not be there next year. So you got to take that out to arrive at your base revenue. And then I took out a decrease for the water filling charges because that's hopefully not likely to continue to the tune that happened this year where I took out $90,000 there. So that makes up all the revenue. So you can see basically your revenue is coming from sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and the additional major K money once you get into a full year of collections in 2122. When you look at the expenditure side, the 5.6 million in expenditures is actually personnel services, which makes up 3.225 million.
Charlie, I'm on it.
Okay.
But how do you speak? Where's the buttons that make you say something?
Bear Cameroff, your mic is on. You have just interrupted the presenter.
Do you have a question?
I'm sorry, this is new to me. I'm off.
Okay, didn't know if you had a question or not. All right, so the basic expenditures, as I mentioned, include the personnel services, 3.225 million. Materials and services and supplies, which is everything that's associated with the payment for staff, 1.775 million, and then you have your CalPERS unfunded liability, the general fund portion of about $600,000. So those are the main things that make up your basic expenditure. So you can see a lot of changes.
We're on the wrong slide. We were on the wrong slide. I think we're back, back to slide 12.
I'm on slide 12. I'm just finishing up slide 12. So a lot is happening in fiscal 2122. And when we put the budget together, we have a lot to think about. And as you'll see on the last couple of slides, we need some pretty good direction from the council on how to proceed with the budget as recommended. So we'll go through that in just a little bit. That rounds out the general fund. So now I'll go through some of the other funds that we looked at. Not a whole lot of changes in a lot of the other funds in the city. But to, just to mention a couple, for the city's enterprise funds, for your airport fund, I've got a $3,100 increase in revenue to 1.276 million. But you see, I have that highlighted in red and asterisks.
Can you go to the next?
There you go. I'm sorry, slide 13, I'm sorry. Those revenues were originally projected to decrease due to low fuel sales, at least what was booked in the city's general ledger. But since the presentation was put together, actually since the mid-year budget was put together, there were some backdated fuel sales from inventory that were actually posted. So we're likely to make that target. We can adjust it back up when we put the mid-year together or put the whole budget together, but it's a small amount, but nonetheless, you won't see too much of a decrease if any in fuel sales for the airport. So that will actually be spot on with revenue. Expenditures are estimated to increase by $6,300. And that is basically due to a higher allocation of personnel costs and some county fees. One thing I wanted to mention on the revenue side as well is the second bullet that you see on that slide. For an anticipated payment for fire staging that is not included in this budget. Apparently, the airport was used as a staging location for the large fires that occurred in the area. And it's my understanding that the city could be reimbursed for use of the airport as staging area in the amount of about $70,000 or more. So that is being worked on, but that may come into the airport budget and be good revenue for the airport. Current projected fund balance, if all of this comes to fruition, will be about $55,000 by the end of the year. So having that extra 70 would take the airport well above $100,000 in fund balance. As with most of the funds, the enterprise funds and other funds that have capital projects in them, didn't change a whole lot in the capital project budget just because we're only six months, seven months through the year. We're entering into springtime and many of these projects get done during that time. So it didn't modify capital budgets too much, if at all, in any of the funds. So all the capital funding for the airport fund remains unchanged. In the wastewater fund, on slide number 14, we're increasing revenues by about $36,000. And that's made up of increased collection of septic fees and offset by lower interest earnings. So additional septic fees has come in.
We need the next slide.
Yeah.
The next slide, Kim? There you go.
So septic fees have come in a lot more than anticipated, but I have to reduce the interest budget only because interest rates are significantly less than they were this time last year. So not likely to see the interest that we saw last year materialize this year. Expenditures are anticipated to go from 3.7 to about 3.6 million, about $110,000 change lower. Expenditures are lower due to decreased personnel costs that are allocated to the wastewater fund and then lower equipment maintenance and repair costs as well. As I previously mentioned, the capital budget of 585,000 in the wastewater fund remains unchanged. So those appropriations are still there. But assuming you spend everything, all 3.6 million and bring in the 3.4 as recommended, you still will have about $3.57 million in the fund balance in the sewer fund, wastewater fund. Okay, moving on to slide 15. For the city's water fund, revenue budget of 3.1 million originally is adjusted downward by about $45,000 to just over 3 million. And that is due to the temporary postponement of late fees in the water fund and lower interest earnings. So we've got to take those out. Expenditure, the original expenditure budget of three, just over 3 million, is budgeted about $28,000 higher. And that is based on increased water operations and capital expenditures for small things like a backup power bit, meter replacement, Maple Street pump station, and the Berry Hill Power Station. There's some residual charges for those projects. And, but every other capital project that's in that fund remains fully appropriated. Water fund has sizable fund balance. It's anticipated by the end of the year about $4.66 million. Okay, moving on to slide number 16. Looking at the, some selected special revenue funds in the city. Traffic Safety Fund, downward adjustment in revenue by about $2,350. And that's just due to lower collections of traffic fines to date. And I'm seeing this in a lot of the cities that I work with, that traffic fines are significantly lower everywhere. So that's going down. Expenditures remain the same, no changes in appropriations, but you'll still have just under $40,000, assuming that budget comes to fruition by the end of the year. Moving on to slide number 17. In the city's gas tax fund, upward increase in revenues by about $4,300. And that is made up of what the anticipated receipts of gas tax and SB1 funding level are likely to be by the end of the year. And then an increase in expenditures as well in the gas tax fund. And that is primarily due to, actually wholly due to the allocation of personnel costs into the gas tax fund to use that for related personnel costs as opposed to other funds. So $96,000 increase there. At the end of the day, the gas tax will have just over $3,000 when you receive gas tax, you spend it, and related transportation needs, so that fund is whole. One thing I did want to mention is that to continue to receive the SB1 funding, which is approximately $83,000 each year, the city has to have, or actually has to meet a maintenance of effort requirement, otherwise known as an MOE, of about $274,000 from discretionary sources for transportation purposes. So essentially what that means is you've got to spend $274,000 in general fund type revenues on street-related purposes to continue to maintain that $83,000. I'm working with Andrea on that. And when we put the budget together for the coming fiscal year, we'll have a slide presentation on that to make sure that the council understands exactly what that means and what the requirement is to maintain that those $83,000 from year to year.
Andy, is it, this is Madge again. I think Stephanie decided to forego getting that last year because we didn't have the general fund to... Is that correct? Does anyone remember that? I think we, we just...
Yeah, I had not, I had not heard that, Mayor. But that would make complete sense to me. And the engineer and I are having conversations about this and that actually was discussed today on whether or not we think, you know, does it make sense for the city to continue to receive the $83,000 when we have to spend $274,000 in general fund revenue? But given the makeup of sales tax and your very good source of transportation-related funding that you get from the Transportation Sales Tax Fund and the gas tax alike, we're going to put all that together and make the recommendation to council on whether or not, you know, that makes sense in the future.
Yeah, that was just my recollection of a year or two ago that she pointed that out, that we were foregoing that because we didn't want to do the matching funds or whatever, the general fund. But I don't remember for sure. Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. So slide number 18 now, Kim. So slide number 18 is your sales tax transportation fund. So the original budget of 1.25 million is increased by about $60,000 to 1.31 million. And that is simply because the impact of COVID on sales tax was not as bad as originally thought. So we can adjust that upwards a little bit. Expenditures are projected to decrease by just under $50,000 from 1.46 to 1.41 million. And that is basically due to lower allocations of personnel costs, and you can see that on the gas tax side for the transportation activities. So some of those costs are going into gas taxes, those are transportation. As I mentioned, with capital, all capital remains appropriated and there is a thousand dollars that's added as an appropriation for residual costs associated with the Maple and Laurel Utility Project that's actually transpired this fiscal year. Assuming all of this comes to fruition, your projected sales tax transportation fund balance by the end of this fiscal year will be just over $2.25 million. So that's a nice fund balance in that fund as well. Moving on to slide number 19. Okay, this is your landfill post-closure fund. This fund, an increasing revenues by $67,000 from 154 to 222, 222,000. And that is simply because we did not collect anything last year in fiscal 1920 related to any reimbursements from the Lea County for their share of the landfill post-closure costs. So I put those revenues back into this year's budget in anticipation that hopefully by the end of the fiscal year, something will be worked out where we can actually begin to start receiving again the funding for related costs that are due. Costs are projected to go down from 154 to 149,000, decrease of about $5,400. And that's just because supply costs are likely to be lower based on the cost to date. That fund, because of the unreimbursed costs in the past, does have a negative fund balance at this time of about $255,000. So if we don't receive the revenues this year for reimbursement, then that's going to be a little bit higher. So maybe just start working on that to make sure that, at least if there's any money that's due to the city for the reimbursement on these costs or half of the costs or whatever it is, that we actually have that coming back. So that's your landfill post-closure fund. Moving on to slide number 20. This is the narcotics forfeiture fund, which is basically your asset forfeiture funds that come in for police-related activities. You can see that we have no revenues budgeted at the beginning of the year, $35,000 in expenditures for police cars. By the end of the year, we're likely to have $20,122 in asset forfeiture funding come in, which has already come in, which is why I put it there. And then I kept the appropriation for $35,000 there, but I moved it from a capital appropriation into a materials and supplies appropriation specific to training. And the reason for this is because I had already budgeted for a police apparatus or cars in your capital projects fund that was carried over from a previous year. And the amount in that appropriation will be sufficient to cover the leases that were recently approved for the police cars for the balance of this year. So I worked with the police chief, indicated there is a training need or a need for training. So this is one of the things you can use asset forfeiture for, recommending that movement. If we spend that whole $35,000, we will still have at the end of the day $36,000 in fund balance as of June 30th, 2021 in that budget. And then slide number 21, as I mentioned, the capital projects fund, no changes here. So the capital projects fund remains with $785,000 in expenditure in revenues offset by 1.16 million in expenditures. Keeping in mind, there's a carryover fund balance that's in there from a previous year from sources for things like... from sources for things like the PSPS grant and other sources that are anticipated to be spent this year. So Capital Projects Fund should always balance itself out. No change to the Capital Projects Budget. And then ultimately, the goal that we have is to roll all future capital projects into a capital improvement plan, which we'll talk about in just a minute with noted funding sources as part of the budget process. Okay, so now slide number 22. So when we're looking at the coming fiscal year, fiscal 2122, and the budget development that is likely, well, that will transpire between now and the time the budget's formally adopted in June, there are some factors that are affecting that budget that need to be thought about. First of all, the economy, the recovery from the whole COVID environment. We have no idea where this is going to go. And, you know, we can speculate that we see things improving. We see things maybe weren't as bad as originally thought. So all of that will be considered when we put the budget together. But again, it's a wait-and-see approach. And as things change, which happen rapidly, we will build that back into the budget and take that into consideration. The inclusion of Measure K funding into the budget and then ultimately determining what the priorities are for the use of Measure K funds. Measure K is going to add 1.2 million to your budget. Keeping in mind that you, you know, you had a systemic deficit if you had all your positions filled and everything else. So, you know, the whole 1.2 million, it won't be totally available, but you will have a large portion of that that will be available for priorities that are determined by the council. Continued recruitment and retention of a city workforce. You've had lots of vacant positions and you've got lots of priorities in the city. And you want to make sure that you can recruit good people to come in with the city and more importantly, stay with the city, to retain those employees long-term. Get your public safety positions filled, to get your public works and parks positions filled, to get your administrative positions filled. So long-term, that is a huge priority for the city. You have to keep in mind that retirement costs continue to rise. So you have a CalPERS unfunded liability. It doesn't impact the city as much as others, but the costs are increasing. One positive note, and I just heard this yesterday, is that CalPERS appears to be making its quota in terms of meeting its discount rate, 7% for this year. What I heard was they're already at more than 10%. So that's a positive development that will have, you know, good ramifications on the unfunded liability. Won't eliminate it by any means, but nonetheless, it won't make a go-up either. So hopefully, CalPERS will make that return for this year at more than 7%. Establishing the DOT organizational goals. So the city manager talked about this a little bit earlier, what are the goals of the council? And having that goal setting will be very important and very critical to determining what your future budget looks like for 2122. As I mentioned, developing a five-year capital improvement plan and coming up with your anticipated projects and corresponding funding sources over the next five years. We know what next year's capital projects likely look like, but how will that parlay into future those? And what are the needs for future those? And more importantly, how will they be funded? So this plan will help the council look at that and really look at big picture from a capital perspective on what's coming down the pipe. And then one thing I would do want to do for your council is develop a comprehensive general fund multi-year forecast, six or seven-year forecast, to assure that within that forecast, which really looks at every line item on both the revenue and the expenditure side from a base perspective, and then puts in assumptions on what we think revenue growth is going to be, what we think expenditure growth is going to be, or, you know, not growth, and looks at that long-term and whether, to see whether or not the city is sustainable long-term. So that forecast will be forthcoming as well. Moving on to the final slide, slide number 23. So this is the tentative budget development process calendar as we move forward after tonight. So the budget process overview will occur in fiscal, actually in April of 2021. And that will be during a council meeting. And what we'll do at that point is we'll give you a high-level overview of the budget development drivers. We'll look at the base budget requirements that we've been talking about tonight and what those are specifically. Capital Improvement Plan, the initial presentation of that and what that's looking like. Delivery of a services plan based on goals that come out. And then an update of the general fund multi-year forecast that I mentioned. So in April 2021, we'll bring that to the council so you can see all the tools we're using to put the budget together for the coming year. And then more importantly, provide staff with direction on what you want your budget to look like. We anticipate the city council budget workshops will happen in April and/or May of 2021. These will include department presentations for each department on service levels and the things that they're looking at and what they need, budget recommendations and any stopping considerations. And then during those workshops, we hope to receive direction from the city council regarding updates to a recommended budget. And then ultimately, we will consider the fiscal 2021 citywide budget sometime in June and move on. So I have one note there at the bottom that Brian did talk about earlier tonight in his report, that the council may also consider goal setting or priority planning as part of the process, which obviously is going to happen. So that's some outpour. I'm going to stop there and address any questions or comments or take any direction at the council house at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Andy. I appreciate the thoroughness and understandability of all of the points that you ran through there with us. And I'd love to have any other questions or comments from council members? Jerry?
Well, Andy, obviously from your presentation, it looks like we are still dipping in reserves this year, which we anticipated. But going forward, I guess this is kind of a loaded question, but do you see us having to dip into reserves, I guess, continue to deficit spend? Or think we could start looking towards being in a position of building up our reserves again? And then, obviously, the reason I ask is I know that you already did provide some raises to lease, and I know that all the bargaining units may be coming back. And I want to be realistic as we frame our budget. If they may want X, you can only afford X depending on the growth, what could we do? Because I want to be transparent with our employees and the public. And I feel like we've got, the community has had some faith in us to be able to keep the city going. So that's one thing. And looking at PERS, is there a way, I know we talk about unfunded liability, but is there a way we could start socking away some money to retire that? Or do we have to kind of deal with it on a yearly basis?
Those are two very, very good questions. So for the first question, in looking at, you know, whether or not the city's going to be dipping into reserves in the future, I think, you know, the, going over the, let me just pull it up on my screen real quick so I can take a look at it. Going over the general fund base forecast for fiscal 2122, that kind of gives you an idea, at least from a base perspective, what it looks like before you make any decisions about next year, before you make any decisions about, you know, what goals you want to implement, what changes you want to make, you know, what service levels you want to enhance with the addition of Measure K. You know, there's just under $600,000 in your preliminary base that is available to you. Now, I would not encourage the council to spend all of that, you know, right away. I would encourage the council to build on reserves if that's a goal, so that those reserves can be used to, the second question that you bring up, which is dealing with, you know, future CalPERS unfunded liabilities. As we know, CalPERS is, that's a moving target. You know, they're having a good year this year because the market's experiencing record growth. And, you know, they're lucky that the stock market is doing very, very well at this point in time, as are other areas for them in their investment portfolio. But if you look at the last 11 or 12 years, although their discount rate is 7%, which is what they anticipate earning on their portfolio every year and what they build into their forecast when they compute how much we owe them for the unfunded liability, over the last 12 or 13 years, they've only made 5.5% on average. So you can see there's a trend, but they're not making the 7%. So what many cities are doing is they're socking money away into a specific reserve for CalPERS called a pension stabilization reserve that will actually enable the city to, in a bad year where CalPERS doesn't meet it and those costs go up more than anticipated, the city can use those reserves instead of dipping into operational costs to pay for certain CalPERS expenditures on a one-time basis. So that is a very prudent thing to do. Or the city can even look at issuing a pension obligation bond where interest rates are significantly low right now, less than 3% for a well-rated city, to enter into pension obligation bond and get, you know, get funded closer to that 100% level and have a fixed cost over time as opposed to a variable cost when you have CalPERS subject to the whims of the investment market. So again, you know, you're going to have additional funding because of Measure K and because of the improvement of the economy. And depending on what your council decides in the goal setting and priority setting, you know, I wouldn't encourage you to spend all of that. I would encourage you to, you know, to take the will of your constituency and do with it, you know, what's expected, but certainly not to the degree that we're showing on the slide.
Okay. Other questions or comments from council members? And I will open it up for public comment, too. Any council members? Greta?
I just wanted to echo what Jerry said, and thank you, Andy, for this presentation. This is the best that I have felt about the budget in the two years that I've been on council. This is the clearest, most easy-to-access report we've seen. So thank you so much. This is incredible.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this is Sabrina. I would agree, it was very clear and easy to read. And I really appreciated the fact that you put in the base budget concept to give us an idea of where our baseline was. So thank you.
The other thing, in terms of the timeline for developing the next budget, the compensation study that we authorized back in December, I want to make sure that that's factored in there because that will obviously affect people's expectations and our competitiveness in personnel issues. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's find out when that is due and make sure that that's available to consider.
Okay.
If there are, Larry, did you have anything you wanted to add? Larry? Okay, so I'm not hearing anything for a minute.
Okay.
What was that, Larry?
I said, "It's okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Andy."
All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing on this matter. And I see John Hafdek found his way to this meeting. Thank you. I'm glad you were able to do that. Did you have your hand up to comment? No, you're just saying hello? Good. Any other public comments? And I am not hearing any. We are supposed to adopt these revised budget numbers. So I would entertain a motion to adopt this matter.
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation. Is that, are you moving that, Jerry? Okay, moved by Jerry Gonzalez. And Greta?
I'll second.
Seconding. If there is no further discussion, I will ask Kim to do our roll call.
Okay. Would help if I turn my mic on. Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes. And again, thank you, Andy, for the job. Very well done.
You're welcome. Looking forward to working with your staff in bringing back the budget. I think we have a very comprehensive process, and it's going to be fun. So looking forward to it.
It does help that we have Measure K funds coming in, but it's also really helpful to know what our numbers are. And this was the best presentation we've had, I think, so even in my eight years. Going forward, item 9B is discussion and possible action directing staff to proceed with plans and specifications for the Blosser Lane rehabilitation project and attempt to bid and construct the project in 2021. That is to be presented by Engineer Wilburn, City Engineer. Rod, there you are.
I am here. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. As the title states, staff's looking for direction on how to proceed with this project. This project has been in the works for over a decade now and has been worked on intermittently. It was, it was put on hold in around 2010, I would say, for some funding issues and some things that just kind of tabled the project for a few years. But a couple of years ago, there was a drainage improvement project along the west side of the road. And now staff has worked, Jeremy and Andrea have worked really hard to get to 60% for the improvement plans at this point. And one correction, since the agenda summary was published, is that the urban forestry grant will not be funding the trees. And it's likely, the alternative we talked about earlier today was probably D1 funds in the next year. So I think the best way to, you know, the project is pretty standard, includes complete roadway rebuild from the city limits on the south, Highway 20 on the north, and sidewalk curb and gutter, about 25 street trees, enhanced crossings for the school, including bulbouts. So Kim, would you mind pulling up the slides on that? We could kind of walk through the project from south to north.
Hey, Rod, it's Jeremy, just jumping in while she's pulling the slides up. We do have like $33,000 of the urban forestry grant available for trees. So it'll fund about half the trees.
Okay, thank you.
How's that look?
Looks fine. If you can maximize the, this is the southern extent of the project, down to the city limits on the south, just pretty much in front of Blosser Lane, which is just pavement improvements. We'll try to move through this pretty quickly, given the dry, the dry content. You can go to the next slide, please, Kim. And this is, these are the enhanced crossings in front of, in front of the school. And you'll see where the sidewalk extends, there's some improved sidewalk on the west side of the road across from Blosser Lane, which is included. But that's all of the sidewalk on that side of the road. The majority of the sidewalks on the east side, running from what's on the right side of your screen there, the north side of Blosser Lane, all the way up to Highway 20. So go ahead and move on to the next slide. So one of the things you'll see on this slide, the green trees are proposed trees and the yellow trees are potential trees if, if the, if some changes to the project are considered or directed at the end of this meeting. This project includes Class 2 bike lane on either side of the road for the bike and pedestrian plan from 2009. We've had some discussions since then and with Brian and Jeremy and Andrea about the FXT or the value of having a bike lane kind of all by itself out on this stretch of roads since it does. since it doesn't... There's nothing to the south for it to connect to, and there's not enough room on Coast Street to the north for it to connect to. So, there's the potential that we modify the project, remove the bike lane, add some trees, and there will be some cop savings in not having to widen the road and include that extra pavement. So, if you could go to the next slide, please. So, this is where the project continues and gets to the railroad tracks. And we... There is discussion about phasing the project and stopping the development, like developing from this point south. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, but from this point south for Phase 1, and then from this point north for the remainder of the project, so that it can be completed over two summers and not interfere with school, and school gets back into full session. So, that... There's that benefit, but there's also the potential increase in cost by the simple fact of phasing the project. And there obviously would need to be some coordination with Mendocino Railway, with Skunk Train, on the cropping. And I think that's still in the works, there have been discussions, but nothing's been finalized there. So... Next slide, please, Kim. Much of the same, seven-foot-wide sidewalks on the east side of the road, on the bottom there, and trees on both sides with crossing at Franklin. And... Next slide, please. There's some storm drainage improvements that have to happen at this intersection, sorting out what was there. It was a little bit of a challenge, but I think we've come up with a good solution. And basically, just sidewalk, new pavement, like I said, throughout, and the sidewalk will continue across the Broadus Creek Bridge up to the north. And will get us to the Highway 20 intersection. Kim, if you could go to that slide, it would be great. So, one of the changes that's happened recently is Caltrans brought forward a potential project for the Highway 20 Blosser Lane intersection to improve pedestrian and traffic safety. Right now, they don't have funding for the project, and we don't know what the timing would be for them to fund the project. I believe they brought up the potential for the city to take this project forward and potentially get it funded as well. But it adds a degree of uncertainty with respect to the improvement for this project and how they would conform with the potential Caltrans improvements. And we thought about just taking this section out north of the bridge out of the project and waiting for the Caltrans project to mature and have a better understanding of when that might happen. But we also know how long Caltrans projects take. And with that being potentially up to five-plus years, we recommend it, like, we recommend the improvements all the way up to Highway 20. And if, you know, one alternative at a minimum, improving the pavement through there, because it's in such bad condition. So, the... Let's see here. There's really not a lot more to this project. Jeremy, let me know if I'm forgetting some key component here. It's... I'll get to the budget part of it. It's a straightforward road rehabilitation project that is a large section of road that has been in need of repair for some time. The rough budget number at this point is 1.5 million, which is a large chunk of... The majority of the project would be funded through absent sales tax. We don't have that breakdown yet. But, you know, at this point, I saw the number earlier at the end of the fiscal year, estimated revenue... Or estimated fund balance, the transportation fund being 2.25 million. So, it's a... That's a big chunk of the current fund balance. So, that's had... What staff is looking for at this point is direction as to how to proceed. Continue developing the plans with a potential phased construction approach is one option. The second option is continue... I don't even know if we would continue necessarily, but look for outside funding to fund this project. And the third option is to move forward with some modified projects, like taking out the bike lanes, stopping the project, or at least stopping the pedestrian improvements at the Broadus Creek Bridge, et cetera. And that's where we fall at this point, trying to figure out which way to go on this. And that's why the project's council direction is.
I have a question.
Ed? One, two.
Okay, go ahead. Was that Greta first?
Suprina.
Suprina, okay. Yeah, I'm gonna go back to viewing everybody. If we can... We don't need that slide up. We can... I can see people. Okay, so, Suprina, and then Larry.
I would be curious to know how much communication there has been between the Safe Roots School and the school and any committees themselves as far as input around the bike lane.
Rod?
I don't have an answer to that question. I would... Jeremy? This is pretty new, so I'm doubting that there's been extensive discussion about the bike lane, whether or not that... So...
No, I mean, yeah, sorry, that's Jeremy. You know, whatever happened previously to establish the need with the bike and ped plan is the last I know of it being talked about. But now, we haven't talked to the school about it yet.
Okay, because I wouldn't feel comfortable supporting a plan of putting it in place or eliminating it without having consulted with the school or even Safe Roots to school. I mean, they're an integral community partner in ensuring that we're doing what the community, what they want, what they need. So, I'd really like to see that component.
Okay, then you're Larry?
Yes, I talked to the superintendent this morning, and he said that he would not go for the bike lanes at all and might go for it if we have a roundabout on Highway 20. But he's not for the bike lanes at all. And knowing, being in the meetings for the roundabout, that's a long ways off. So, he's just concerned that he wouldn't have the bike lanes at all. That's his opinion, the superintendent of school. My other question is, is how are we gonna water the trees?
Oh, we have irrigation planned.
Yeah.
Okay, I see Jerry... Oh, go ahead.
Are you gonna irrigate it with city water? And not just a fire truck that goes along the road, but actually water in the ground?
Yes. Yeah, actual irrigation.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Jerry Gonzalez?
I kind of was in the same position as Suprina, because in this design, Rod or Jeremy, would you be eliminating parking with those bike lanes? And maybe that's why the superintendent is against it, or would it be wide enough? Because I know that, especially across the street from the school, they park there to load and unload kids, and then just farther down near Roberts, there's parking there on one side, and on the other side, it gets allowed. So I think anything that eliminates parking, makes parents walk further, seems to cause them some issues. And I know that the school had, at one point, had uncrossing guards and didn't encourage kids to bike to school. So, that, the whole need of whether they want the bike lanes or not and what collateral effects they have, is things in the back of my mind.
Yes, Greta?
Oh, can I just talk about Jerry's parking question real quick? The inclusion of the bike lanes, I don't think eliminates any existing parking, but eliminating them might let us add some. I need to look at that.
Greta?
I just wanted to say that I agree with Suprina and Jerry's comments. I am concerned about the lack of public input on the decision to remove lanes, bike lanes. I also wanted to say that I have heard from parents who don't want their kids to bike in that area, particularly because of the Highway 20 Blosser intersection. But bike lanes aren't just for kids. They're also for adults who use bicycles as transportation. And there are a lot of homes on that side of town. And this council did recently rezone the area behind the school to potentially allow for more housing development. And if that does come to pass, having bike lanes on that side of town would be important. And right now, it's an island, but down the road, there might be opportunity for more in that area. So, I just want everyone to keep that in mind. I'm not saying yay or nay, but it's just something to think of.
Any other comments from the council, and then I'll open up for a public hearing? Okay, anyone on the public here would like to address us on this issue? I'm not hearing anybody. So, could you, either Rod or maybe Brian, just summarize what action you want from us today? And can we... Because there's some unanswered questions, obviously, that we don't want to make decisions without further information and consultation with interested parties on things like the bike lane. So, I didn't reread what the staff recommendation was. Maybe we should read that and see if that's what we're comfortable going ahead with, or do we want to postpone? Rod?
So, staff's looking for direction on where to go. Obviously, if a bike, if we were to say the bike lanes aren't necessary at this point, they are something that could be added in the future, should it be, should the situation be more appropriate, let's say. You would potentially take parking, some parking, and turn it into bike lane, et cetera. I think, from the sounds of it, that needs to be further explored, and there needs to be further discussion with respect to the bike lanes. So, would, I guess, the question for city council is... Does this project have...
All right, let me jump in here, Rod. I think the best thing to do right now is, I think we can put the project on delay and conduct some public engagement, reach out to school officials and see if it's necessary to include the bike lanes or not. Other than that, that's really the sticking point in this project at this moment. And if the council feels uncomfortable without having public input on that component of the project, it's better to table it and bring it back once we engage the public or the school officials.
Yeah, and bike...
Ed?
And walking bike lanes, you know. Yes, Larry, did you have something to add?
Yes, you know that it's against the school law for the kids to walk or ride their bikes across Highway 20, right?
No, I didn't know that.
That's true. The kids can't do that. They have to, if they go to Blosser Lane School, they have to go down to the street light on Commercial Street, or which is 101, and come across that way. They can't go across Highway 20. Or that's what school is telling them.
Okay, I see Jerry has his hand up, so Lindy can add something to this.
I think that's what they advise the parents. I don't think it's... Larry was saying, that's school law, but school rule. I think that's still the case. I would support a phased approach, just because I know that that road needs a lot of work. But at the same time, especially given the gap... I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm not against getting the roadway up to par, depending on whether or not we, what happens with parking or bike lanes or whatever for the public engagement part. But I think it does need some work there, just watching the road. And obviously, our sidewalks that we have there are, in a sense, are the asphalt as opposed to cement on the east side, I think. So, anything that kind of cleans them up as part of this project would be nice. And I'm assuming we still have drainage issues there, Rod?
Yeah, there are some drainage issues on the west side there at Franklin. So, one of the considerations is to construct this year, in this fiscal, this calendar year, you know, we're getting to that point where it's time to finish up the plans and get it out to bid, or we get too late in the year and it becomes problematic. So, that's part of this, the timing component of this. And I would just say that we would want to bring it back pretty quickly and have some public input right away and be able to bring city council more information to help make a better decision, more informed decision.
So, perhaps that's what we should do, is put this on a future agenda, a very soon future agenda. And I also just wanted to comment on, well, two things. One is that I don't think we should hold up what we need to do for Caltrans, because God knows when they're gonna get their act together. That could take a long time. But I also kind of liked what you were suggesting, Rod, about having a two-year so that we're not under construction during the school year, because we are gonna start having schools in person again, I think relatively soon, certainly by the fall, if not sooner. So, not having that road torn up during the school year. So, that means we want the timeline for now to enable us to do at least half of the project this summer, if I'm correct.
Has the city manager's recommendation on this?
City manager's recommendation, I think, is that we postpone action until we've had a little bit of public feedback on the question of the bike lanes.
Well, my original recommendation is to proceed with the project as presented, without the bike lanes. That's the staff recommendation. But hearing the comments being expressed by the council, there is an opportunity to do public engagement in a reasonable timeframe to come back to the council and present those comments that have been solicited if it helps the consensus of the council to move forward.
Yes, sir.
What was that, Suprina?
For clarity, it was the second of the options that our city manager had proposed after hearing council's input that I was supporting.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, Suprina is making a motion to accept the second option, and Greta is seconding it. Could you, because I have trouble bopping back and forth on my screen here, could you read what that option is, Brian or Rod?
Go ahead. I can jump in there, Rod. Essentially, to, I guess, table this item that's before you tonight to allow staff to conduct public engagement regarding the inclusion of bike lanes on this specific project. We would like to bring it back to you within one month.
Okay, that's the...
Rod, are you agree with that? Yeah.
And is that your intent, Suprina and Greta, with your motions?
It is.
Okay, and Jerry, did you have a comment?
I guess I was gonna add... Um, I guess I was gonna add, it would be nice, and I support what we're doing, but the event that we end up phasing it or whatever, it sounds like they were also looking for direction as to what other project or they were doing with this. And I'd be interested in what, if we don't do all of this or part of this, what might we also do as part of that discussion when we have it?
This is Jeremy. Can I just, we, if, if this gets delayed and ends up not being, you know, constructable this year, we definitely have other projects that we can bring to you guys. It's not, this isn't the only thing that we're planning to get done, so there will be something.
Okay, great. Just one more comment for me to take into account is a little, if there's not a reasonable prospect for extending bike lanes either to the north or south, I see that as somewhat problematic. Yes, I'd love to have bike lanes everywhere, but that if it's not a reasonable prospect, then it seems silly to have a little tiny section. So that can be brought back when we do this. And I guess any comments from the public before we act on this motion? And hearing none, then we are going to have a vote on Suprina's and Greta's motion, and Kim will take the role. Oops, you're muted.
Stransky?
Ed.
Is that yes?
It was a yes.
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Mayor Strong?
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Item 9C, this is going to be presented by City Manager Brian Dender regarding declaring two police department vehicles as surplus property. Brian?
So what the council is looking at tonight is a resolution that takes two existing outdated unnecessary vehicles from the police department fleet, and it classifies them as surplus asset for the city to allow us to utilize whatever equity is in these vehicles and apply that to outfitting the new vehicles which have been ordered. And what the value, the money that the equity in these vehicles will be applied to branding, logo, logoing, and placing some wrapping on the junior vehicles.
Okay. Okay, so that's it. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Oh, yes, Greta, okay.
I move to accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Jerry Gonzalez. If there's no other comments from the council, is there any comment from the public? And hearing none, seeing none, let us have a roll call vote again for Kim.
Stransky?
Ed.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Mayor Strong?
Yes. Okay. Now we're moving along. We're on item 9D, which is a request to withdraw city application under the Equity Resilience Self-Generation Incentive Program, that's quite a mouthful, to fund backup battery system for the city water treatment plant. And I believe Dusty Dooley is going to present this and turn it into English.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor Strong. Thank you. Good evening, council members. Dusty Dooley, proud to be your community development director. The council may recall at the, at the September 9 meeting last year, the council authorized staff to enter into agreement with Tesla to participate in this California Public Utility Commission self-generation incentive program for the purposes of funding a backup energy storage system at, at both the city water and wastewater treatment plants. Staff has attached the agenda summary from that September 9 meeting, as it provides some good background information on the program and expected benefits to the city for, for participating in the program. I do want to note that staff, at that time, at the September 9 meeting, we understood that we still had further due diligence and review to, you know, ensure that the systems were going to integrate with our treatment plant. And, you know, we also understood that it was, was necessary to bring them out of the council in September to essentially stay in, stay in the game. According to Tesla, the program funding was spent down the day after funding was set aside for our project. You know, further, staff also understood that, that we maintained the option to back out of the project if it was deemed appropriate by council. You know, since, since council's authorization, staff has been working with Tesla to, to develop the, the battery system designs, you know, really, really getting down to the meat and potatoes and, and, and understanding how this system was going to integrate with, with our system. And, and going through that process, it, it led to some additional concerns by staff, specifically with the ability of the battery system to integrate with the water treatment plant. Our operators have concerns that the, the battery system has the potential to create problems with the functionality of the, of the water treatment plant. And staff is also unsure as to how the battery system is going to integrate with our existing solar array at the, at the water treatment plant. You know, one of the main benefits of the backup battery system at the, at the wastewater treatment plant is the, is the energy cost savings it presents, which is estimated to be over $425,000 in the next year, next 10 years. Since we already have the solar array to help power the water treatment plant, you know, the energy cost savings will not be realized at the water treatment plant. In fact, the, the need to cycle the PG&E line power through the battery system, consistent with the condition of the funding source, the, the water treatment's actually projected the cost to city up to an additional $3,100 per, per year in energy costs. And in fact, it, it could be a little bit more than that as, you know, it may be that we need to add additional batteries to, to meet all the different energy needs at the plant, so that $3,100 per year could, could actually be, you know, maybe twice that. You know, really, it was, you know, my colleague Andrea Trippotto, who, who, who once again needs to be commended, she, she spent a considerable amount of time doing due diligence, vetting the design with our operators, working with Tesla staff and city staff. And, you know, at the end of the day, you have a recommendation in front of you to withdraw our application from the program to fund this backup battery system at the, at the water treatment plant. We're still on all go, green light, moving forward with the battery system at the wastewater treatment plant, which again represents a significant cost savings to the city. However, based on, on the uncertain, uncertainty of the battery system to integrate with the, with the water treatment plant, and the, and the fact it doesn't represent the, the reward of energy cost savings like we expect to see at the wastewater treatment plant, it may be that the risk outweighs the potential reward, which again is, is why you have that staff recommendation in, in front of you today. You know, Andrea's on the line today, and she may, may wish to add to my presentation, Mayor. And of course, we're, we're both available to, to answer any questions that the council or public may have. But yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Great. Andrea, do you want to add anything at this point?
No, actually, Dusty covered everything very well. And I, I would also like to say that, that the operators raised some, some concerns and, and worked with Tesla on the details of, of the design, and, and they were a big part of, you know, identifying some of the potential operational issues up at the water treatment plant. And then upon, you know, further discussion with Tesla, the wastewater concerns were alleviated. So, so we feel really good about moving forward with the wastewater treatment plant. And as Dusty, you know, outlined, the, the water treatment plant just doesn't really give us any benefit. So yeah, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Greta?
Um, I would like to move to accept the recommendation, recommended action, but I also wanted to say that, to ask Andrea, if there's any possibility, I know it's an older solar system up at the water treatment plant, is there any possibility to approach a different kind of battery backup? We know that just last week, the water treatment plant was out of power and was forced to use generators to keep the city's water supply going through that last storm. They did a fantastic job, but ultimately, I think for energy savings, we would all hope to some, at some point, get a battery backup so we wouldn't have to rely on generator power in those kind of situations. Is there any potential for that, Andrea?
Yeah, that's something we're looking at as, as something on the horizon. But honestly, with the recent purchase of the solar array, we wanted to get a little bit of time under our belts and, and figure out, you know, how we're doing with the ownership of that before introducing something new into the system. But essentially, one of the benefits we were looking at with this, with the Tesla system, was whether it would integrate with the, the solar array and be able to be charged from the solar array. And the, in our discussions with Tesla, that integration didn't sound possible. However, we think with a possible, like putting it out to an RFP and looking at, at some design options that are, are customized for our system, we can, we can develop a system that would charge from the solar array. And I think that's where we would re-realize maximum benefit.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. And Jerry?
I would like to second Greta's motion and also thank Andrea and Dusty for the work on this and, and keep an eye on the money and our power.
Any other questions from council members before we open the public hearing? Hearing none. Anybody from the public want to address us on this issue? And I'm hearing none. So we have a motion and a second, but have a roll call vote. Thank you, Kim.
Stransky?
Ed.
Gonzalez is calling?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Mayor Strong?
Yes. Okay, good work. Now we are at item 10, City Council Committee Boards and Agencies Reports. And I recommend we keep these as succinct as possible, but let's go ahead and report anything that's timely at this point. So why don't we just go in the same order that Kim always calls everybody? I think Stransky, do you have any?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Okay, Jerry?
Really nothing. You all probably got the email from Sarah regarding a federal bill that looks like we might get money from loss revenues also. I'm sure Andy will be...
Okay. And Greta, Connie?
Um, I attended my first MCAG meeting as the representative for the city, and it was a pretty basic meeting, just electing the new, actually the same chair and, and co-chair or vice chair. I did ask for an update on the Highway 20 Blosser Lane intersection. As we heard last year, there were supposed to be some interim improvements made to that intersection that Caltrans was going to do before they decide on their big project. We have not yet seen those go in place. Apparently, they were delayed because of the fire and then again because of winter weather. But it is on the docket, and hopefully, we will see some enhanced pedestrian improvements at that intersection slated for this construction year. That's it.
Oh, great. Okay, Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
MTA had discussion around who would be our long-term executive director. We have had Jacob King, who's the Willett resident, serving as our interim executive director, and the board unanimously offered him the, the permanent position of executive director. He's from our community. He came up from MTA as a driver and went way up to executive director, because he's a great asset to our community and to the MTA board. I know that we have been putting more and more bus service back in place as demand begins to pick up and have been working closely, MTA has been working closely with the county in transporting COVID patients. And people have been suspected that may have COVID, so been a good partner in that. Follow-up to report.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have a report that EDFC, the Economic Development and Financing Corporation, is meeting tomorrow at 2:00. And I know we, we have hired a new executive director for EDFC now, and I, his name has just escaped me, but I'll, I'll fill that in in our minutes for this meeting. He's a very young, energetic, local man, and, and he's been very involved in the community. So we're really happy to have him. And we are going to be approving or considering another loan tomorrow, so there's quite a bit of loan activity, which is exciting. The other thing, other two other things I have to report is that the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority will be meeting on Thursday, February 18 at 10:00 in the morning. And I think things are going along pretty much routinely there, but we'll have that opportunity to keep on track. And I mentioned Sonoma Clean Power Board and that the previous main representative from our Mendocino cities is no longer on the Point Arena City Council, so he's not, not going to be able to continue to serve. I have checked with Fort Bragg, and Lindy Peters is quite interested in being appointed to that. So the city selection committee, which meets March 3, will be formally making decisions about some of these county-level city representations. So that will become official after that. And I'm really happy to have somebody who's really interested in Sonoma Clean Power. So I think those are all of the boards and agencies that we are reporting on. And we are now at council member reports and recommendations, and our first item there is a proposal to form an ad hoc committee with the subject being the reuse of the vacant Howard Hospital facility. And Sean Hascheck contacted me a couple weeks ago about this, and I'd like him to explain kind of where the county is on it and what his request is.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Strong. This came from the, the Measure B ad hoc, or the Measure B committee that's dealing with the Kemper Report, and they recommended to the Measure B Oversight Committee to, to pursue investigating, you know, the possibility of old Howard Hospital as the psychiatric hospital facility. The Oversight Committee then recommended that an ad hoc be formed with the two members of the Board of Supervisors, which is Supervisor Williams and myself, and, you know, two members of the Willett City Council, so that we could kind of explore, you know, what the issues are, hear concerns, see if there's information that needs to be shared, what kind of possibilities are there, what the, the real issues are. And, you know, because I know, you know, I've talked to each of the... are, hear concerns, see if there's information that needs to be shared, what kind of possibilities are there, what the, the real issues are. And, you know, because I know, you know, I've talked to each of the city council members of Willets, and, you know, people have certainly concerns. And so it's like, okay, let's see if those concerns can be addressed in some way, whether it's through the, the contracting of the provider, whoever that might be, or whatever, if it's a physical situation with the Old Howard Hospital, you know, let's just look and have open conversations about what's going on and if it's, if it's possibility for the, the city council and the people of Willets. So that's kind of the idea with this, the forming the ad hoc. And it came from the Measure B Oversight Committee.
Okay, thank you. And so I've had a couple of conversations to see who is interested in, in exploring the options that might be available for the Old Howard Hospital site. And I would like to appoint Greta Connie and myself to form an ad hoc committee to look into this. And, and I think, in my view, part of the, the charge of that committee is to look at its possible use for facilities that the Measure B committee might be recommending. And we don't have many details about exactly what that facility, what are the pros and cons and configurations that we, we haven't really seen a hard, a specific proposal. So we want to look at specific proposals and see what the pro and con on those are. And as John said, are there issues that can be addressed and issues that can't be addressed with that? But I think also I'd like us to look at other possible uses for the old hospital. It's a, it's very central in our community, and it's really important that it be something that will benefit our community. So there might be other options that we also look at. And I, I would think our, our ad hoc committee would be very open to hearing all the different stakeholders and community members who have concerns and ideas about this. So I know that there are some people here to, to talk about that, and this could be a start on that. But I think it'll be really great to have a, a meeting with the ad hoc committee, including the, the county members of that ad hoc committee, to really go into it in depth. But let's, let's open it up. First of all, is there anybody on the council that wants to add anything or have a question about, about this committee? If not...
Larry.
Jerry, okay, I see Jerry's hand up, and Larry maybe also, okay?
I'll let Larry go first.
Jerry, go ahead. Jerry, was that Jerry also?
Yes.
Okay, because I can't see anybody, so I, so Jerry and I did this for a year, for two and a half years. We went to every Measure B committee meeting. And my knowledge, it's never come up for the city council to ever vote on it or discuss it or anything else. It's, and so I was really surprised when it came up on our agenda for, to check it. But again, I mean, the people in the community, I mean, my phone has rang for the last two, two, five days, I wish, three days to five days. And so you need to listen to what the people have because you have to, the people have to be able to talk to you about how they feel about it. And you have to represent everybody, just not one little group.
Absolutely.
And that's on it. And, and are you going to bring your findings back to the city or are you just going to ram them through?
No, absolutely. The ad hoc committee does not make decisions. We would, we would make recommendations based on what we hear from the public and exactly what you're saying. It would definitely be open to that and, and to addressing any specific concerns. And as I said, can they be mitigated or not? And, you know, what, what are those concerns? But you're right also that the council has never seen a proposal. So we're, I do want to mention however, this, the council did adopt, and Jim Lance wrote a very thorough letter about the fact that the city should be involved in the decision-making. And it has to do with, you know, state law and, you know, what the cavity and what the city's obligations are. So we have on record that the city does believe we have the right to be involved in the decision-making, but it has never come up to the council for even a discussion of the specifics.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that what the action that the council took, agreed to back in May of 2018 was adoption of a resolution that contained that statutory language that the city had oversight of, some oversight on this process.
Right. And anybody who wants to be involved in, in opinions about this, if they want to see that, I'll make sure we have copies available and I can, you know, send that by email to anybody that wants to read just, you know, the opinion about what the city's legal rights to be involved in this decision-making. And Jerry, you had your hand up.
I just kind of wanted to explain that I would love to serve on this, but I am a volunteer board member of the Advisory Board for Venice, which could potentially be the player. And has been in conversations, I believe, with the county and other parties. And so therefore, I didn't feel that it would be appropriate for me to be on the ad hoc. I don't know yet whether or not I would have a conflict, you know, a, a Venice, not be the ultimate provider slash operator, but, so I wanted to explain that for the members of the public. That I'm a volunteer on that board, and so therefore, the other thing is that I did speak with Supervisor Hashcheck a couple of weeks ago. I did tell him that what started myself and Larry attending those meetings was that it seemed like it was kind of being snuck through on the city and the residents and that he, if he was interested, should engage some of our residents and give them some of the names. And the idea being that I think a lot of people wanted to be heard. I think the fact that we have this ad hoc, and I encourage those members of the public to contact those members of the ad hoc. That's all I have.
I would foresee that we would definitely have a public forum and everybody would be invited and maybe several public forums. But one of the things we need is more details about what is being proposed. And is that, that's sort of the bottom line, is exactly what are, are we talking about here and the specifics? So anyway, I would like to, if there's no other council member comments, open it up to pub... Oh, yes, Suprina?
Yeah. Before forming the, the committee, I'd like to share some of the concerns I have. I do want to hear from the public. I do, I did go back and look through some of the information I'd received before when we were having these discussions, and that I've been bombarded, like probably many of you have been recently. But I, I expressed a match that I have serious concerns about the time commitment of taking this on as a committee. Will we be, how much staff time will we be allocating to work on this project? We have other priorities in our city, but how much staff time are, are we willing to set aside to support this? How much support will there be for the county to get us the, the documents? I don't want to find us in a situation where we're having, as elected officials, to essentially work a part-time or full-time job trying to get what we need and getting into a difficult situation with the county to obtain what we need. They've yet to produce anything, in my mind, really concrete that has put us at ease for the concerns that have been expressed over the course of the last two years. We've just said, okay, we've got the, we've got the Kemper report. Well, where has the, where's the research from the county that says, okay, this was concern A, here's how we propose addressing this, here's concern B? We've not seen them do their part. So I feel like in some ways, it, it's a little too early for us to be able to say, yeah, we'll put together community, a committee and talk to the community about what we want. What are we supposed to tell the community in these committee meetings when we don't have any answers? If you don't have answers to their questions, you're just, you're spinning your wheels. And I'm very concerned about that. And I'm concerned about some of the political pressure that we're getting to push this project forward at this specific location because that it, it helps maybe the Howard Foundation alleviate their problem, but could very much create a problem for our community or a financial liability for the council. There, there's just so many questions, and I think the county needs to come better prepared to answer these questions.
John, do you want to respond to that before we open it up to public comment?
Yeah, if I could, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that's part of the process is figuring out what the questions are, what the concerns are, and getting answers to those. And I think that's kind of the task of the ad hoc committee, to just deal with all of these concerns and then bring them back to the city council. That's, that's how I envision this process and certainly having some town hall meetings. I'm scheduled to meet with the Director of Public or Behavioral Health and hopefully former Sheriff Tom Alman, who, with the Rotary, you know, on the 25th. You know, we want to, we want to reach out to the community, we want to find out what the issues are and if they can be addressed and get those answers for you, and then bring it back to the city council and see where we are at that point.
And I would just add that I think neither Greta nor I have unlimited time to spend on this, so we expect that the county has to provide us with some specific information to work with. And I don't expect that to be a burden on our city staff. But if, if they have no specific plans, it's premature for us to discuss what the plans are. So I think that's the first thing is that, you know, Greta and I and, and the ad hoc county members are going to say, you know, what's the actual proposal that we're, and what are the other options that have been looked at? And then that gives us something to go from, and maybe Greta wants to add something about that. We, we don't want to spin our wheels.
Yeah, I, I certainly agree with that. I'm not interested in spinning my wheels. And I also am looking for a little bit of information about how often and how long these meetings will go. I, I work full-time and I can't just be on call for endless meetings. So I do need a little clarification about what that's going to entail.
Okay, so let's open this up to the public, public hearing on this item. And if there are folks out there that want to pipe up, we give a three-minute limit on public comments per person.
Hi, Mayor Strong, this is Aura Whitaker from the Willis News. Speaking as a public member, I also attended the last Measure B meeting when they spoke about this, using the Old Howard Hospital as a potential site. And from my understanding, the board was, the Measure B board was in a bit of a disagreement because some people thought they should look into it, other people thought that that was premature because they couldn't even spend time looking into it if the city of Willets and the Board of Supervisors, the county, were going to allow it. So they don't even know if basically it needs, like if it's a potential site. They don't know if, you know, it needs to be retrofitted or how much it would cost or something like that. So they don't want to spend their time looking into it until they know if the city of Willis will allow it and wants it, as far as I can tell.
Okay. It's the chicken and the egg here. But thank you for those comments. I'm going to open it up. Any other comments from the public? Yes, Chief Lizaraga?
All right, not so much a comment, but just a, hopefully a recommendation that in these discussions, whatever the plans are, if it involves something like that within the city limits, that public safety be a part of the discussion or have a seat at the table to kind of put our perspective on the possible impact that this kind of facility would have on us. So, you know, whether it's myself or one of the department supervisors to represent, I think it's important for us to be there. So I just wanted to state, state that.
Okay. Definitely. Other comments from anyone in the public? So anyone...
I'd like to speak.
Yes?
As may Mayor Kameroff.
Mayor, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Oh, good.
Go ahead.
Regarding this, and, and I'm a little puzzled by why there is even going to be another ad hoc committee. For the last three years, two of your council members and several of us from Willets have followed this very closely. And what is being proposed, where somebody said they didn't know what is being proposed, is a PUF, a health facility, a lockdown facility, for which the county has already provided us with a tremendous amount of information about what kind of facility it is and what it will require and what kind of, and what the situation is with security. We've, we've heard from the Kemper report in great detail. It's all already out there, and it was presented to this council three years ago, when the council not only made a resolution that they have the responsibility to make decisions, but also that they found that this was a very poor location for many, many reasons. Primarily because, not primarily, major, because the building doesn't need local zoning, doesn't need local building codes. Our fire chief said the building has serious problems with water. We explained this all to the county, excuse me. And then a week ago, at the Measure B meeting, Dr. Jeanne Miller, who suddenly is now in charge of that committee, you may have heard that they fired Allison Bailey and moved her up. And, and she just sat there at that meeting and called everybody in Willis a nimby's and went on and on about fear and about being nimby's who didn't want things in our backyard, which I admit is issues for many people. But a lot of the issues are very solid problems with this building. And the only thing that's changed in three years is that the city of Willis and the county discovered mold and mildew throughout the building and in the heating system to make it even more expensive. So to me, to have yet another committee, I see you're going to do it anyway. But all this information is already out there. You know, you don't, you know, you don't have to go to all new meetings. It's right there, it's available. I have all the files. Larry Stransky spent hours and hours and hours looking into it and reporting it. It's all well-known to your city council and to the members of the community. So I have no idea, other than us being a bunch of nimby's again, why it's suddenly being brought up and appears to be, at least for some members of, some people who don't live in Willets, to try once again to try to get this thing in an old, 100-year-old building that's rundown in the middle of our town. Anyway, thank you. Sorry, I cut in before I didn't know how to use the system.
That's okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Other comments from the public? I would say that several of the, in fact, four of the five council members were present during that 2018 discussion. And what I heard from them at that time, including myself, was that we wanted to know more specifics before we would take a position yes or no on any given project, that we did not want it to get rammed down our throat without our involvement, but we did not have enough specifics and there wasn't, it was, there was, you know, there was a bit of discussion about it, but the city council did not take any vote that we liked it or didn't like it. We thought it was premature to do that. And I think that's still the case, that at least several of our five council members are, want, want to know more about it. Are the issues such that they're not solvable and that it would be a detriment to the community? Then that's, that's a vote that the council has not taken yet. But I, I hear what you're saying there, and I think we, that's what the ad hoc committee will just sort of try to, with an objective look at it. Here are the issues that have been raised, and then here are the, you know, counter arguments. And there are people, you know, that really think this is an important service, that this facility could be used for and that this community could use. So we want to hear from both sides, and we want to be practical and protect the city. So I think the decision has not been made by the council yet, and that's what the ad hoc committee is just going to prepare kind of a, if you want, a working paper, you know... hoc committee is just going to prepare kind of a, if you want, a working paper, you know, pros and cons, here's, here what the issues are, here's what we've heard from the community. And then we will have a hearing at the city council before any action is taken. Anyone in the public who wants to be invited to a forum with the ad hoc committee, we would like to have your contact information. We definitely want to invite anyone who has strong opinions and concerns, and figure out what those are, and are they solvable, are they not solvable? And I hear what, you know, the county's saying, well, if the city's going to say no anyway, why should we get, you know, invest our time on this? Well, you know, the city hasn't said yes or no. Okay. I guess that item is, I don't hear any other comments being made. We, Greta and I will, will look at, and with the county representatives too, some time to have a public forum on this, and it'll be publicized, and it'll be a Zoom meeting. So anyone who wants to participate can do so. Okay. Are there any other council member reports and recommendations?
I would like to add, then.
Okay.
In regards to that topic, could we get something from Jim Lance as to whether or not Jerry will be able to vote on that matter, because I do think that it is relevant, at least for council members. There's the potential for it to be split, and just wondering, we could save ourselves some time and trouble, so if Jim can give us some information on that.
Jim did give Jerry some relevant sections to look at, and Jerry felt like just to be on the safe side, he didn't feel like he should be on the ad hoc committee. I had asked him if he would be, but he felt...
I was referring beyond the committee, Matt.
Yes, I know. And then I don't think he's decided yet whether there is a potential conflict of interest. I think legally, you know, it's definitely not clear, because he does not have a financial interest whatsoever, he's just a volunteer member of a board. But, so I would hope that Jerry would not recuse himself when it comes to the council. But it's really Jerry's decision as to whether he feels uncomfortable or not about a potential conflict, loyalties. Is that, is that fair, Jerry?
Yeah, so at this point, I feel like I shouldn't be a part of the ad hoc, but that depending on what is ultimately proposed or what's coming down, that's where I'm making my mind.
Okay. And I think that Jim, you know, put it in his court to make that decision, that Jerry decides rather than Jim telling him. It isn't a clear-cut thing. It's, if anything, I think Jerry's just sort of bending over backwards to not, you know, not wear two hats going up to, in advance of this. Okay. All right. And I do think that this is worth our time to really look at it, because this is an important decision that affects the city going forward. And as I said, the old Howard Hospital is very central in our, in our downtown area, and, you know, it's sort of an icon of our city. So we want to make sure whatever happens there is going to be a benefit and not a detriment to the city. And I think there might, one of the things the city, this ad hoc committee might do is see if there's some other proposals that are better than the ones that the Measure B committee is coming up with. But, okay. Other, moving on, other council member reports or recommendations on any other items that you want to bring to our attention? And if not, any good and welfare?
Mayor?
Yes.
Karen speaking on behalf of staff, so.
Who is that?
Karen, your favorite HR person.
Karen, all right. Thank you. It takes a while to find whose voice it is. There it is. Go ahead, Karen.
So good evening, Mayor, council members, Karen Stevenson, your HR analyst. First, I'd like to wish a happy belated birthday to our new fearless leader, Brian Bender. His birthday was Sunday, and we're so thankful to have him. And yesterday was Vice Mayor Suprina Roberti's birthday. So happy birthday to both of you. I hope you were treated special on your, on your day, and you got to enjoy a big slice of cake. What I'm here to do is kind of talk about our recent storm that we experienced, probably the worst storm that we've seen in decades.
Karen, can, before you do that, would you be the right person to say a few words about Kathy Moorhead's family situation? And just extending, or is that something that we shouldn't do publicly? I don't know.
I personally would like Kathy to be able to share her thoughts on her own. We do have Kathy in our hearts and her family, and wish that she wasn't going through these experiences, but she does have our love and support. But I would rather have Kathy speak on her own behalf.
Okay. I just, I want her to know that we're all thinking of her and sending her love. Go ahead, then, Karen.
So again, going back to our recent storm, I was told it was the worst in 30, 40 years. This storm affected our businesses, our residents, and our employees alike. Providing the highest level of service to our community has come, that the community has come to expect from us is sometimes difficult, when many of our employees who live in Brooktown's area were faced with five days with no power, heat, hot water, some weren't even able to get out of their driveways that first day. All of our employees did what we expected to do, which is to ensure their families were safe first, and then they came to work to ensure the city's services ran smoothly, efficiently. The efforts of all of our employees are commendable and greatly appreciated. I want to say thank you to each and every one of them. As expected, during events of this kind, our police department steps up to answer their increased calls for help. Dispatchers Rebecca Ford, Michael Stainbrook, and Community Service Officer Two Brittany Ponica Fardoni are dedicated, caring, and extremely professional individuals who worked 18-hour shifts to answer those calls in a calm, respectful, and professional manner to reassure our residents that we were doing everything possible to help them. These three, along with many officers, slept on cots in the station throughout the storm so they could continue to be available to serve our public. And thank you for all you do, you are truly rock stars. With that said, I'd like to express our sincere admiration and appreciation for the exemplary efforts of three employees throughout the storm, especially that first night. Due to severe staffing shortages, all of our police department employees regularly worked lengthy hours and numerous days in a row. Sergeant Rico McCoy remained on duty for 36 hours straight, answering calls and ensuring the safety of our community. Sergeant McCoy continuously demonstrates his leadership and dedication to our officers and this community each and every time a event of this nature takes place. Sergeant McCoy, we are sincerely proud of you, and thank you for the level of service we provide. Our Chief Water Plant Operator Sean Payne and Water Plant Operator Three Clarence Tarver also remained at work at the water plant throughout the night, tirelessly ensuring the plant ran smoothly and seamlessly. Some of us may not have had hot water or power or heat, but we did have clean, fresh water, and that should not be taken for granted. The endless hours all three of you spent working here, and the professionalism you've shown has filled us with pride in your dedication and commitment to making every critical aspect of servicing our community tirelessly and seamlessly. Your passion for your job is what makes each of you an incredible person to work with and gives me immense pride, taking, or telling everyone how proud we are to have employees like you working with us. Thank you once again to all of our employees for your commitment and invaluable contributions toward ensuring the city runs smoothly and effortlessly through rain, sleet, snow, fires, and power outages. I salute you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Karen, for that. Yes. Right. What a, you know, what an incredible dedication and extra work into that. It was, yeah. And unfortunately, I mean, even though that was, what, the worst in 30 or 40 years, or maybe more than that, it's possible that it'll happen again. So we're having to get as prepared as we can. Thank you so much.
Well, we have officers in public works, you know, out in the streets directing traffic up Sherwood Hill, and, you know, some of them put their lives on the line, because some individual residents, you know, after four or five days without heat and food, and, you know, they got a little thirsty, and some people almost got ran over. But again, you know, they're out there for 18-hour shifts in the rain, in the snow, in the cold. You know, I, I mean, we all work hard, every, each one of us at our jobs, but our public works and our police department are just, time and time again, really, really show their dedication to public service, and they should be recognized.
Thank you so much. Okay. Any other comments, good and welfare? We do not have any post-session. So I think we are ready to adjourn this meeting at 8:48. And thank you, everybody. We'll see you again on the 24th of February.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have 8:55.
8:55 is correct.
Okay. My clock is not right, but...
Okay.
Whatever Kim says it is.
8:55.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you so much.